She's she's technology tonight.
Technology.
Nope.
I do. And I'd put it in here too.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. May we have a roll call?
Stacy Killian.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Christina Chris.
Present.
Amy Lor.
Present.
Carrie LaBella.
Present.
Ken Warner. Jane Skelton.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for our tentative agreement for collective bargaining.
Move to open the hearing. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstain. Thank you. Next, we have collective bargaining statements. Mr. Michael Cox and VCTA representatives.
Good afternoon. Our purpose of this uh opportunity today is to discuss the tentative agreement uh that has been brought forth by the administration and uh VCTA. We have uh hopefully here a slide presentation of the general comments and changes that are up for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. This is going to be a two-year agreement. It's different. Somebody didn't like my colors on my slide. Kate Shand does a great job on it because I am colorblind, so. She did not like, I think I had blue or purple uh colors on the slide, so. Up on the board here, you have year one salary. And what I will do is go through each year adjustment. Salary one for year one, year two, then we'll do insurance and then other items that are associated with the agreement. So during year one, this is twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. All eligible teachers will receive an increase in their base salary of one thousand dollars. Additionally, teachers defined within the lost generation will earn seventeen hundred and fifty. The definition of that lost generation are teachers that are hired during or before twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year and up to the salary of sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. This year, our base salary will continue to stay at forty-eight thousand dollars. Our max salary will remain at eighty thousand five hundred. So we do have to have parameters within that salaries range. And this will meet the herb definition for that. Any base salary increase that causes a teacher that to exceed the eighty thousand five hundred dollar mark, which we do have teachers that will and are above that mark, will receive a one-time stipend and that stipend will be distributed on or before December thirty-first of this year. During this uh adjustment, we'll talk about this later and why this uh needs to be adjusted. Our salary schedule, as we see it in our collective bargaining agreement, will be removed. And we will expand upon that as we go through there, but I did add that to this slide. Year two, for the twenty-six, twenty-seventh school year. Again, this is just all compensation model. Eligible teachers will receive an increase to their base salary of one thousand dollars and that does affect all individuals that are eligible. When we talk about eligibility, that is based off of an evaluation of effective or highly effective. Teachers defined, again, within that lost generation of being hired um during or before twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year and um salary based up to sixty-five thousand five hundred off of this year would receive another seven hundred and fifty dollars added to their base. You will also notice in this twenty-six, twenty-seven school year that the starting base salary will increase from forty-eight thousand to forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. That's an increase of five hundred dollars from this year. Maximum base salary will increase to eighty-one thousand and that is also an increase of five hundred dollars raising that top salary. Any base salary that increases over that eighty-one thousand dollar threshold during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year will also add a um stipend, one-time stipend. And we will see that that stipend be distributed on October, on or before October thirty-first of that year. Those two slides will then um finish any type of base adjustments of salary for teachers that qualify during those timeframes. Additionally, during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we would like to and VCTA agreed upon this, to add into the language of an exemplary attendance. And that is a hundred thousand dollar pot of money that will be available during that year. There are some criteria that must be met and for eligible teachers to meet that criteria, it'd be a ninety-seven percent attendance during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year from start to finish. There is a provision, though, that depending upon the number of teachers, that's how we will divide that up. But if only one person were to attain that, uh we would like to minimize that to a thousand dollars for that person. The rest of it would go back. We do believe that there's going to be more than one person, but we do have to meet those criteria. That supplemental payment will be distributed as one-time stipend during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. It will be distributed on or before June thirty of that year. Insurance over the two years on one slide here. During this year, twenty-five, twenty-six, and we did uh bring this to the board earlier in discussion, that our contributions made to the VCSC will um maintain a current contribution proportion. We will also maintain the HSA, uh four hundred single, six hundred family. And just remind the board that that was a nine percent increase that we took during the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year based off of utilization. For the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, we have maintained that same percentage of nine percent is the maximum increase that we would go up to. If it would go over the nine percent um projected number, that would be passed on to the employees. There's also a provision within that, if the HSA, if it does go over the nine percent, exceeds the nine percent, it would be removed and that's what that sunset language is discussing at that point in time.
Actually, Michael, the four to six hundred stays, but the sun setting was just so that it, there was an ending time. It didn't go on perpetually.
Correct. Because within this diagram, remember, we can only go on a biennium. So we can only have a good, a contract for two years. It cannot extend into a third year. Uh extra day, extra duty, extra pay, and this will uh begin for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Because we've already started that, we do not want to go back and and try to navigate some waters. Middle school and high school counselors stipends will increase. The original number for that is twenty-five sixty-eight, two thousand five hundred sixty-eight. It will increase during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year to three thousand six sixty-nine. Boys and girls golf coaching stipend this year is thirty-three oh two. It will increase to four thousand seven sixty-nine next year. The color guard stipend uh will be split during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year into two different timeframes. Uh one that will call, cover the fall colored guard duties. And a second one will uh cover the winter guard duties, uh and that's independent during the contesting season. Those stipends will be set at two thousand five sixty-eight for those activities. And again, that is for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Middle school athletic directors receive one period off already at this time. We have extended that period for a second one because of some additional duties that will be um required during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. One of those additional duties, you will see in the next slide there, establishment of middle school football. That stipend for the head coach, which we did have not had. Uh this would be in line with all of our other middle school head coaching positions will be two thousand two oh one. And assistant coaches will be at one thousand one hundred and one. But those are all in line with the middle school stipends as they are within our extra pay, extra duty as of right now. The last item on that slide, established girls flag football stipend um as an additional EDEP because it's an emergent sport. Right now, it is covered this year and next by the Colts grant that graciously gave to establish uh flag football within Indiana. We're taking advantage of that and our flag football team did quite well this year. But we would like to go ahead and since we've had that item brought to our attention, I do believe that that will uh maintain the current enrollment and probably grow. But we will, at this time, uh negotiate two thousand two oh one for head coach and one thousand one hundred and one hundred and one dollar uh for the assistant coach. Additional provisions. Um right now, within our uh contracts, we have supplemental contracts from previous years. So if you have a master's or a PhD, you will see your base salary and then there's an additional supplemental uh contract attached to that that accounts for your advanced degree of two thousand or your PhD of four thousand. This year, during negotiations, uh we will move everybody's masters or PhD to their, and they already have this on their base salary, but move it to one salary, one contract going forward. And I've just moved all kinds of stuff.
One more.
I'll put it down. Sorry. I don't want to show my whole hand here today. It's like negotiations. But our advanced degrees right now are within two contracts uh for everyone. Everyone right now will be modernized and they will be put on their base. It's not going to be a reduction, but it will just be modernized for our office. And I think uh Amber will be excited about that. She's not maintaining multiple things. If you were to attain a new degree going forward, if it is an advanced degree, it will be added to your uh base salary based off of when you provide all documentation. Previous years, soon as you got your materials to us, we would add that money. We have required, at this point in time, a deadline for all individuals to submit that. It also helps in negotiations for coming forward to know how many advanced degrees people have obtained over the next couple of years. So we have added a deadline for um individuals to get that material to us. So as soon as they do that, we will add those additional supplements to there. The last item at the bottom uh is to help dual credit. We do believe dual credit is important uh to our schools, to our students and to our families. Uh we want to be able to provide uh opportunities for our children to graduate with as many credits and get through college as quickly as possible. So we would like to incentivize our teachers to continue getting dual credit certified. And once a teacher completes an eighteen-hour option, they would have the ability to be added a thousand dollars one time as a supplemental s- uh payment to their base. If that person goes on and continues in to get a advanced degree as a master's in some form or fashion, we would then add another thousand dollars to that person's uh base salary. Other provisions uh that we've added on here. Uh one is for maternity leave language. All of our language is to code. It was um um officially correct, but sometimes uh how it's written is unique. Not a lawyer, but um people do those things. We then took a look at those and clarify, clarified them to make it easier to read. Uh and the VCTA appreciated that option and uh they accepted those changes and I did not put them on there because it's quite lengthy. Last item on this slide deals with teachers earning certifications uh like Project Lead the Way. Where our corporation invests in our teachers to obtain that uh credential. And it is schooling, it could be uh traveling expenses and so forth. This provision, uh if you choose to get that credential, that you are going to stay with us for three years. If you choose not to stay with us for three years, the expenses that we have put into you, you will be responsible for paying back. Uh and that is the, we had a different version of that and it was a really nice hundred percent reimbursement. And I think that's an opportunity to keep people here. That's what we would like to do. I know normally I don't spend this much time, but I want to make sure that I clarify everything up here and take questions at the end. Next to the last slide, uh more items that I think will help our teachers not only increase salary but benefit our students in the long run. National Board Certification uh is an opportunity that our teachers have to go through a rigorous program to obtain this certification. This recognizes that and how much work goes into it. They also have to maintain that advanced degree as well. If they do obtain that, they provide us the documentation, uh we will increase the base salary by two thousand dollars. It would just be like a master's uh opportunity. Middle one there uh talks about creating local certifications. These certifications are opportunities um that I think is important for professional development. And we send people for professional development, but we have a lot of people within our district that are very um they're experts in their own fields. This gives us an opportunity to work with VCTA to develop up to twelve local certifications that teachers participate in. And as they go through this class, at the end of it, once they have completed that certificate, they will then submit it in a timely manner to us in July and would be. That would allow us for the next contract year to add five hundred dollars base uh salary. And so we'll do those type of things. Um HRS possibility, um OG training. Or Gillingham for people. I actually learned that one for me, uh because everybody's talking about OG. I'm like, what is that? Uh I'm not in elementary world, thank goodness. But those are type of things that I think the teachers have to have. State's requiring those types of things. This gives us an opportunity to train those teachers and give them the opportunity to earn some money. The last one on this slide is literacy endorsement. This is a state mandated endorsement that all teachers are required in elementary to get. And I believe it's going to expand in middle school as well. Uh we have to recognize those and we do have quite a few teachers right now that have provided those opportunities. The increase to their base salary is a hundred and fifty dollars um that we have provided. We talked earlier about removing the salary schedule. By adding a hundred and fifty dollars, that does disrupt the salary schedule. So that's the reason why at this point in time, we've had to remove that. So we still have the beginning of the salary and we have the top of the salary. This uh opportunity does give a hundred and fifty dollar base increase. At this time, that ends the twenty-five, twenty-six contract, twenty-six, twenty-seven contract. And I would be happy at this time to take any questions that you might have.
There is no board action this evening, so the board, please, if you have any questions or comments, now is the time.
Why such a big leap for golf coaches?
The golf coaches were at a buying all of their own in the extra pay, extra duty. We do have them providing almost the same opportunities during um the year as cross-country. And so this also gives them some opportunities to add some of their um.
It was just brought to our attention that they were just a group that was left out and not brought up to align with all the other coaches and we.
The outlier.
It is. It was an outlier.
And we have outliers within that extra pay, extra duty. We're trying to get to move those.
Fix those.
Twenty-two oh one. I don't know twenty-two oh one. Why not two thousand? It's easier to say. But I'm not going to take money away from anybody at all. So don't, don't worry about it. That away. Two thousand two hundred and one dollars.
It's like the price is right.
It is.
Okay.
I like the incentive on attendance.
I believe we have a lot of people that spend powerless times coming to work, um not feeling well. Uh and it gives us an opportunity to recognize those people and we do have that. I made a joke that we didn't want one person to get that. I do believe we have several hundred teachers that are going to be able to.
I just wanted to also uh say, appreciate having the extra time for the athletic directors in the middle school. As we were doing our listening sessions in all the buildings, this came up repeatedly. And I just, I appreciate seeing that and being responsive to that.
Thank you.
I have a question about the lost generation, just so I understand. You said hiring in before two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen?
They would hire anywhere between twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Basically, they're working in their tenth year of this school.
Okay.
This year's their tenth year. They will be completing their tenth year. So twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen and up to sixty-five thousand five hundred because of the salary schedule. But they would be in the tenth year.
Could I ask how all of these changes in additions to the contract is if, is communicated to all of our teachers that may not be a part of the union or in those conversations?
The union was able to go out and have their meeting. Um we had a significant number of people that have emailed us. And I will say this publicly, uh we have received your email. You've had a response. You're in a file. And we will get to you within the next couple of weeks, uh because there has been quite a number of those. Hopefully, people are going to listen to this podcast. It is able to go back and review it. Um but we can actually go out and visit the schools and do those type of things. I don't have a problem. If it gets me out of my office, I'd be more than happy to get out of my office.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Another question in this is just because it's probably be, just a little bit of ignorance and this is my first year.
No, you're fine.
Say a teacher isn't part of the union, are they allowed to come to HR and
Yes, ma'am.
negotiate their own salary? Okay.
That's not. But they can come over and ask about.
They can ask about it, but they can't negotiate their own salary. Okay.
Yeah, in Indiana.
That was a question I, I had recently.
In Indiana, the collective bargaining is in statute.
So total number of teachers, thousand something?
Thousand twenty-four.
How many the lost generation, three hundred and something, probably?
I believe it's three hundred and so. Okay. Yeah, okay. Let's go three thirty.
Donna, what was that, three thirty?
Let's go three thirty. Yeah. Let's go high and and if it's.
The, the, the reason we're saying that is because we're in the process of veri- verifying things.
Okay, okay. So round about.
Because there are people who are hired like in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that because they took a leave of absence and didn't work one year, only has nine years and this was just ten years and above. So that's the reason why we're using it. We're, we're trying to finalize it.
Okay. Good.
Do we have members of the lost generation at the bargaining table for this? There were two of them? Three of them? Good, good, good. Okay. So three participating and one non-speaker.
Yep.
Okay. That's good.
Although I think she was speaking behind scenes in the caucus, just.
And who determines what the lost generation was? That's also a question I've gotten recently.
The bottom line is, is that we reached a mutual agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. That's good. That's a good.
I will, I will tell you this. Um we had spirited conversation.
Spirited? I like that.
Uh it is an opportunity to get people uh around the table that have different um different viewpoints. And to be able to finish a contract that um for no reason of ours is very limited on what we have available. And we want to make sure that our school corporation is in a good place. Our students are in a good place, our teachers in a good place. We're not going to make everybody happy. But I do believe within this group, and I will uh thank the VCTA and how they've worked very hard and diligently from the last con- uh contract to this one. Because they did put in time. I, I don't believe people realize how much time that those people put into it. But we're never going to make everybody happy in what we do. But we hope to, it's a step forward in building a future for our teachers.
So, and this is for anyone who participated to, to answer this question, but does I, I look at this and this looks like a really meaningful leap forward, maybe step forward. Are we setting ourselves up long-term to never, to, 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 so that the lost generation becomes a thing of the past? And that those folks are, are moving towards a place where, where they're not feeling that pinch, uh you know, moving forward. And I'm, I know we can't speak to future contracts, but um are we moving in that, is that the general sense that we're moving in that direction?
I, I think that what we did is we made a significant increase of what we were able to do, given the conditions and the monies that we had available to us. I don't think that there's agreement um amongst the teachers themselves on who is and who is not a member of this. There's a lot of different definitions of that, which made this very difficult to try to, to navigate this. The, 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 the bottom line is, is that we, we want to maximize the money we have so that we can recruit and retain teachers. And it's not an easy conversation to have. And there's many different viewpoints in the room as we try to navigate. There's many different viewpoints within the, the membership that we have to try to, to do so. I think what's most important is we've created opportunities for people to increase their salary who take the time and effort to go and do things that make, that increase their expertise. The idea of getting an advanced degree, the idea of getting an internal sort of um credential that we are, are forming that is going to be around professional development that we, we mutually work together to find out that these are things that all, all teachers should know. And as we lose expertise because of retirement and things like that, we need the replacements to also learn that expertise and have that for our kids. The National Board Certification is another example that. The literacy endorsement was, was another example. Those are ways to increase your base salary. So that in the future, that we, we have tried to address that. Will it be perfect? In, in, in two thousand eight, the, the state dramatically shifted and changed the way school funding is done. And I think that the state is struggling to figure out how to move this forward in a business, in an organization, in a, in a profession that is very people oriented. When you think about how much we spend of our budget is on people. Healthcare is a part of that. Healthcare rates go up faster than the rate of inflation. I think the state is figured, trying, is struggling to figure out how to keep up with all these changes. I think we're struggling to figure out how to do, make these changes. We are dealing with a system of the past that, that was from a different era and a different funding formula. We're now dealing with different things and I think that we continue to try to figure out what's the best way to do that and try to be as fair as we can about retention and, and recruitment of teachers. And it's not easy to figure out. But I think that we made significant progress and I think we did something that both sides, in terms of us who are at the table, felt like was fair, given what we had available to us to negotiate. And I'm very thankful for the work of the team. I want to publicly state that I thought VCTA um. I thought we had a good working relationship and having some meaningful discussions and working our way through this and I thank them for that. None of this is easy.
No, certainly isn't.
Any other questions or comments from the board? At this time, um, we will accept any public comment available, thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name's Aaron Warner, I'm the V C T A president. I'm here because I just love public speak, oh, I get three minutes, okay. I just love public speaking. Man, any chance to get an adrenaline rush and nothing to do with it, um. I first want to thank the, uh, the team, I'd like to thank the administrative team, uh, Michael Cox, Donna Wilson, Cindy Dehart, Samantha Harris and, uh, Dr. Hemzil. My team was made up of, uh, Marie Thies, Corey Fryhut, Lindsay Eaton, Stephanie Ralston, Chris Stanish, Cardy Sluter, our UNISERV director, Kim Fidler, um, and Scott Dillian, and I have his name last for a special reason. He started at the end of the last contract on numbers. Uh, he has done so much and he has been such a thorn in Donna Wilson's side, um, and it's just been, uh, phenomenal. No one can say that we didn't try, that we didn't investigate. Uh, we were so looking for that movie Moneyball, you know, to find out what the magic thing is with a baseball player. We were hoping, looking at the numbers enough, with enough smart people, oh, there's gonna be a black and white line. This is it, lost generation, not lost generation. There was no black and white line, it was tough. And it is so hard to sit at that table and know wherever that line moves, family incomes change. A Disney vacation is possible, a Disney vacation is not possible. That is hard. You don't go to bargaining, you know, for a bunch of thank yous, you don't go there for a pat on the back. You go there to represent six hundred forty-some members, you don't go there to represent yourself. You go there to represent everybody and do the most good for the greatest number of people. That's my last bargaining, I don't think I'm gonna miss it. But it was interesting as I calculated how many years I knew the people at that table, it's over a century. I have a former student at the administrative side of the bargaining team. Um, I have a nearly three decades old fishing buddy and dear, dear friend, uh, on the other side as well. Um, I've got a fellow graduate from Woodrow Wilson, class of eighty-six. The small town that we have, the relationships that we make, all of that make it to bargaining. And there was respect, I think, one hundred percent of the time. We did have some good laughs, there were some moments where, you know, some, uh, maybe harder words. But sometimes something is not easy to say, and so, but I think respect was always there. And, uh, what I look for in my team, because I make up that team, I look for people who are kind. Um, and people who are honest, that's what I look for, and if you have those two things and you always have those two things, I'm good to have them on my team and they were kind and they are truthful. Cause when I mess up, I need them to tell me I messed up, please tell me kindly, uh, but, but we need to have those conversations. And holy cow, we had tough conversations, uh, behind closed doors.
Madam President, may I move to suspend the three-minute rule because of the nature of this hearing? And the V C T A is the only person here to speak, we need to finish, we need to allow him to finish his perspective.
Can we, can we move to suspend the rules just for this?
Are you making a motion?
I'm making an official motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I want paid attention, my apologies.
I was watching it and I was like, I just, you need to be able to finish this. Because this is what we're here to talk about, so, yeah.
Anyhow, uh, thank you so much, I think it was a good contract. You always hope you got, uh, uh, more out of it than we did, we did, we did hope we'd get more. But administration proved with a spreadsheet, we went to the edge, we went to the precipice. So anyone who's not happy, I can say, I saw the numbers. Had we gone two hundred fifty more, it would have required a riff of one teacher four years from now, and I'm not okay with that. And I'm very happy that my administration is not okay with that. They went to the edge for us and I really appreciate that. I think you did as much as you possibly could for the lost generation, I really appreciate that. We're now answering a lot of emails and I've got a meeting next week to look at individuals. I've got a dozen names that I gave to, uh, a person today to just start looking up to see, do they make it, do they not make it? We've already have to make some tough decisions, what do you do when someone is nine and a half years? What do you do when they're ten, but they had two years off due to, uh, a, a leave of absence, what do you do there? So now it's the, I guess, the, the Supreme Court side, you know, what do you do at this point? So it's, it's not quite over yet. Anyway, thank you very much for this time to speak, I appreciate it, thank you for all you do. Thank you administrative team, thank you V C T A team and thank you V C T A members, uh, very much for your membership, that is why we are listened to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, I mean?
Appreciate your leadership, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? At this time, seeing no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to close this public hearing unless there is any other comments from the board.
The only thing I will just add is that next Friday, we have to have so many hours, so many days between this meeting and the ratification. So I appreciate your schedules, next Friday, we will have a vote of the ratification, that will be the only agenda item. Call the meeting to order, we have public meetings on whatever's on the agenda. We have one agenda item, it is to vote yes or no for this, and then that would conclude the meeting. That's what next Friday would look like.
Five o'clock, right?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
I appreciate the partnership and willingness to work together, I think that, um, allows for us to have a very strong school corporation moving forward. So thank you all that did this work and for bringing it to the board and sharing your thoughts on the process, um, it's, it's very valuable and.